Evening. We are here, September, Monday, September 8th. The Dartmouth Select Board. We are going to be going into our executive session pursuant to Mass General Law Chapter 30A Section 21. We'll be meeting in room 309 in the Town Hall Building. We will discuss the following matters. Mass General Law Chapter 30A Section 21A 3 to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions, or conduct negotiations with union personnel. We will also address Mass General Law Chapter 30A Section 21A 3 to discuss strategy with respect to litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigating process, position of the public body and the chair so declares. Also, we will discuss Mass General Law Chapter 30A Section 21A 6 to consider the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property if the chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the public body. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Mickelson, seconded by Mr. McDonald. Mr. Tattlebaum is running late. Any discussion? Let's vote. Mr. O'Neill, Mr. Mickelson, McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Mickelson?
Yes.
And I also vote yes. We will return as close to 6:30 in this room to discuss our regular session.
We will come to order for our Select Board meeting regular session and it's now 6:36. And we have returned from executive session. We will begin with our Pledge of Allegiance, and I ask that you all stand for a moment of silence afterwards.
Aye.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As I ask every time we're together that we stand and continue to think about our veterans, both past and those working to keep our freedom safe. I also call to mind this week longtime Dartmouth Town Meeting member and a man that served on many boards. Brian Hawes passed in early August. And I also ask you to think of Steve Gasper and his family who passed just last week. Steve was a Dartmouth High School basketball player, longtime coach and teacher in Dartmouth, and will be missed by the Dartmouth community. Tonight, we have a heavy agenda, and we have our full board present, so we will not need to do a roll call vote. So, we're going to start. First item on our agenda is the health -- oh, you are right. We are being recorded, shown live now, and recorded forever to be viewed. Thank you. We're going to start with our new business, Health Insurance Steering Committee. Was Gary speaking on this?
This is just the board's representative, so you may recall you had approved the charge in July for the Health Insurance Steering Committee. This is as we evaluate other opportunities for different vendors. And so, part of the group is a representative of the Select Board. So, just as we get ready to put that group together, we'd like for the board to choose their representative.
I'm seeing a head nod. Is that something you'd be interested in serving on?
I serve at the behest of the chairperson.
Only that worked at home.
This is a position that Mr. O'Neill is interested. Do I have anyone else that would like to be considered?
Insurance, insurance, one way or another, works all hand in hand. I think it's a good choice.
All right. Is that a motion, Mr. Mickelson, Mr. McDonnell?
Yes.
Motion made by Mr. McDonnell, seconded by Mr. Mickelson. All in favor of having Christopher O'Neill represent us to the Health Insurance Steering Committee, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes.
Before it can begin.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you. Next, we are in the process of getting ready to interview for a new communications coordinator, and this next piece is looking for the Select Board rep. Do you have a timeline on that?
So, the way that I am doing this process with our HR team is we have, I asked any department ads who may be interested in serving on an interview team to come forward. So, our preliminary interview team is Sarah Haskell-Ruda, our town clerk, Peter Chase, our Director of Community Media, our HR Director Sue Cunningham, and then our Assistant Town Administrator Chris Vitale. And my goal would be they are going to narrow down the scope to a couple of candidates that myself and one or two representatives from the board, as well as our HR director, will interview for a final interview and then make a selection. So, but they're interviewing tomorrow, I believe, this week. So, by the end of the month, we would look to get these final interviews scheduled.
Excellent.
That'd be interesting.
You're interested, Mr. McDonnell?
I like to talk, so communication is right on my alley.
If for some, is there someone else? No, Mr. McDonnell. If for some reason the date, time, location picked, Mr. McDonnell, you're unable to, I will step in for you. So, we have a motion for Mr. McDonnell to fill in, to represent the board on this interview, and if he cannot, I will step in. Motion made by?
Motion made.
Thank you, Mr. O'Neill, seconded by?
Second.
Mr. Mickelson. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. All right, next. This is exciting. We have a Substance Use Program Coordinator update. We've been busy the last few weeks, so come on up to the microphone. Last time you were here, you were just introducing yourself as new to the job, and here you are. Let's, what have you been doing?
Yeah, I've already got some updates for you guys, so that's very exciting. Thank you again for inviting me to speak tonight. So, just wanted to share our share-outs from our International Overdose Awareness Day that we had on August 28th. Before I start, I do have some programs just to share with you guys from the event.
Thank you.
So, I do know a few of you were able to carve out some time to attend the event in person, and I do want to thank those of you who were present for attending. I do think it was a really impactful event, very powerful. And for those of you that were not able to see it in person, I know DCTV is working hard to get kind of a recap of the event up on the YouTube page, so I definitely encourage -- event up on the YouTube page, so I definitely encourage you all to take a look at that when it does get posted. But our theme this year was One Big Family. That was the national theme for the event, and it really just highlighted the shared grief and impact that overdose has on communities, families, and how it unites us by shared experiences, and like I said, that shared grief. But by sharing those experiences and those feelings, it does unite us in strength. So, that was the message of the event, and just to get the community together to remember those that we've lost and acknowledge the networks throughout our community that have been touched by addiction and overdose specifically. We're very grateful for the time that Representative Chris Hendricks and the Attorney General Andrea Campbell were able to donate their time to the event and to speak there, and it was very impactful. I definitely, like I said, checking, recommend checking out the video just to kind of listen to a little bit of their messages. I'll let those speak for themselves. And we did have some community members share some of their personal lived experience with addiction and overdose. We had Bill Hawks. He's now a recovery coach for Recovery Centers of America, but he was a first responder. He has worked in the emergency, like, emergency departments in the hospital. He had one injury, and that ended up, you know, starting his journey with addiction recovery. Meg Lincoln, she shared a lot about her personal family history with overdose and her own, you know, the passing of her mom, how that impacted her journey and recovery. And then we had Nelson Hughes, very active from the New Bedford community, very powerful speaker. He is from Los Angeles, ended up in the New Bedford-Dartmouth communities, and he had a very powerful reminder of how, you know, we should look with and not down on those in the community that do experience addiction and overdose, but instead, we should all be lending a hand in support because we don't know when it may touch us or our network. So, again, just very powerful, very impactful event, and the recovery resource tables that we had present. I just want to highlight a few. The first mobile crisis van in the state by Child and Family Services was present. Again, something I encourage everyone to check out and take advantage of if, you know, they're looking for a resource. Can't say enough good stuff about what they're doing over there. But we also had such a diverse, I think, representation of services in the community for youth. My peer, they're out of Taunton, but have some locations closer to the Dartmouth community, Fall River, New Bedford, for youth that are seeking a community and access to resources for addiction. And also, the Dartmouth Community Justice Support Center, so anyone who's been impacted by the justice system and faces some struggles with addiction, were also present. So, some very awesome local partners, and I could name the rest of them, but they're all listed on the back of the program, and we thank them for their presence at the event. And just before I go, I do kind of want to plug that September is Recovery Month and also Suicide Awareness Month, so kind of a double hitter this month. But just a reminder, and the messages that we'll be sharing on our Town Facebook page every Friday, is just a reminder that recovery is real, and that stands for Restoring Every Aspect of Life. It is holistic. It is mind, body, and spiritual. So, just to take care of all of those areas of our life and just keep that mindful through the month. And then our next International Overdose Awareness Day, this is a very early save the date, but it's going to be August 27th, 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. here at Town Hall next year, 5:00 to 7:00. And then, just one last thing, just want to share out, New Bedford is having a Suicide Awareness Day event at 5:30 this, I believe it's Wednesday, August 10th, at Riverside Park in New Bedford. So, please, if you're looking for resources or just want to support the community, we invite you to that as well. So, that is my very long, sorry, share-out of our event. But just thank you again to everyone who was able to come. It was, it was a really beautiful event. So, that's all I have.
Well, thank you, Rachel. Having been in the past the organizer of such the event, it was very nice to be more of a participant, and you took the reins and did a great job. So, thank you very much.
Yes. Thank you. No, and thank you to you for leading the program. That was, that was very awesome. So, thank you.
Oh, Mr. Tattelbaum, yes.
I think that, I think I'd like to emphasize the Genesis whole program. They started very small. Mrs. Brooks put her heart and soul into it, along with Dolores, and gathered these funds, found a fantastic coordinator.
Thank you.
And to me, the relevance of that evening was not, was that we keep hammering the message that these, that whether it be parents or siblings who want to try to help somebody, there's, there's help that can be had. And come knocking on our door because we can help you.
Absolutely.
As opposed to, you know, you're not going to have people walk into that awareness day and say, here I am, please help me. But I think the significance, just getting that message out that we, we are there for you. And I also, if I may, also say, what we're going to be doing in the schools and using that funding to get kids busy after school or whatever, I think is a phenomenally genuine idea, use those funds wisely to get kids something. And even, I think we're going to even be able to pay for transportation for the kids to do the after-school. Mrs. Brooks, is that?
That was proposed. The school department's putting that together.
I understand. So, I, I can't, what you've done and how you made it happen, and I know it's personal for you, and it's probably a mission to make life better for others is what you're doing, and I commend you for it. It's a fantastic program where it's evolved.
Thank you so much, Mr. Tattelbaum.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Rachel.
Thank you.
Next, on our hit parade, we have our youth advocate, Dolores Joseph. If I could have Dolores come on up to the mic.
Come on up, Dolores.
As Mr. Tattelbaum said, Dolores and I worked very closely on getting Dart up and running and our International Overdose Awareness Day events happening. And with the hiring of Rachel, Dolores can put down one hat and wear just her own crown.
Yes, which I wear proudly, yes.
Yes, of Dartmouth Youth Advocate. So, Dolores, tell us what you've been up to.
Okay. Well, thank you again, and thank you so much for inviting me, and I just want to echo what Rachel had to say about the event. I thought it was absolutely wonderful, and thank everyone who was able to attend. We're going to continue this ball rolling, and hopefully, as we continue to do this, people who are seeking help or who may know someone who is in need of assistance will know where to go. So, what have I been doing, besides helping Rachel too, but I wanted to kind of highlight some of the things I've been doing over the summer with School on Wheels. So, and I want to thank Mrs. Brooks too for getting me in contact with one of the volunteers here in Dartmouth. So, School on Wheels is located in East Dartmouth, and what they do, their mission is to support academic and social emotional growth of students impacted by homelessness and poverty. This would be my third year working with School on Wheels to get backpacks to Dartmouth students, regardless of whether they go to Dartmouth schools. If you're a Dartmouth kid and you're in a school, and if I can get you a backpack, I will. So, working with Dartmouth volunteers this year, Maureen Benton, I want to give her a shout-out. Her and her team of amazing people helped put together over 140 backpacks to give out to students that attend Dartmouth Public Schools and also any school in Dartmouth, which would be Bishop Stang and Our Sister School. So, the volunteers actually delivered backpacks. I was in and out on vacation this summer, but I wanted to participate and bring, and bring some backpacks to some of the schools. So, I think they're maybe in your packet, backpacks that were delivered to Bishop Stang and backpacks that were delivered to Our Sister School. I think what Our Sister Schools would like to do, they wanted to, like, show their appreciation. So, I think what they told me they will try to do is have some of the kids with the backpack facing away from the camera so that you won't see their faces, to take pictures with the kids with the backpack. So, once they do that, I will make sure that I share that out with the Select Board. So, like I said, I've been working with them for years. Barbara Fox, a shout-out to her, School on Wheels. She is amazing, an amazing partner. If people don't know about School on Wheels, please look them up. They have volunteers all over. They're helping out so many different communities. So, I was really happy that I was able to connect with them to do that. Upcoming things that I'm going to be working on, I always work with the Dartmouth Police Department when they do their holiday drive at Target. So, we have a proposed date in December where we're going to be doing the toy drive again. I'm doing something a little different this year. I've reached out to Town Hall employees because I was approached by a couple of my coworkers stating that they would love to sponsor a child for the holidays. So, trying to figure out how to do that without personal information being relayed to people that didn't need to know. So, got that under control, and I'm pleased to say that I had over 25 people here at Town Hall who state that they want to sponsor a child for the holidays. So, that's something else I'm going to have to do too. I have to figure out how to work that out. But I wanted everyone to feel that they were able to do something for people in the community. So, I'll be working on that with some volunteers, hopefully, some volunteers or my coworkers that can help me with that because that is a big project doing the toy drive in December. So, I know it's only September, but I need to start right now because December is around the corner. So, that is the big project that I'm going to be working on. So, yeah, that's all I've, I mean, not all I've been doing, but that's what I've been working on these past few months.
I have a couple of questions, Dolores.
Yes, ma'am.
School on Wheels, where are they initially located?
East Bridgewater.
Bridgewater, okay.
Yes, East Bridgewater.
And it was just a happy accident that Maureen Benton reached out to me and said that she is someone that lives in our community, and she was given Dartmouth as the territory. And so, she said, how can I get these delivered right away? So, we were fortunate this year that Maureen and her team not only made up the backpacks and filled them, but they also delivered them right to the schools, which was wonderful.
Exactly.
So, I thank the schools for letting us know when the best date to get them out so that they had them in time for the kids, which is great. Do we have, and my other question is, do we have a date on that holiday drive in December?
I believe, don't quote me, I think it's the second Saturday in December. The 13th, I think that's what it is, yes.
Is that what Mike was just screaming out to us too?
Yes.
Okay, December 13th. So, get that on your calendar.
Yes, get that on your calendar. It's always a great time there. There's live music. Last year, and I think the last few years, we've had some students in the community, like, sing and play musical instruments, and there's interviews, and it's amazing how many buses are filled. I think one year, it was like, almost like five buses. I mean, there are a lot of buses out of field. So, those are the times.
Feel-good feeling for those who drop off toys and items into the bus, and it's a feel-good feeling for those of us that are, can turn around and supply those Christmas wishes. So.
Yep. So, I'm going to continue that on. So, that will be my project for this year again. So.
All right. So, my plug, while I, you know, to those at home, if you know, if you are a family that's going to struggle for the holidays, or you know a family that's going to struggle for the holidays, either reach out to Dolores Joseph here at the Town Hall or your counselors and social workers at your school in Dartmouth because they'll be able to feed that information up to Dolores as well.
That is correct. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right. Thank you, Dolores.
Thank you.
Next, tonight, we have a discussion on the preparation for a joint meeting with the school committee. And do we have a date on that?
Yes, our next meeting on the 29th. We had reached out. This is something that Ms. Silver Brooks had mentioned in regards to having a joint meeting with the schools. Internally, our leadership team has met with their leadership team, and I think, you know, Gary did an excellent job over the last couple of years, budgetarily creating that working relationship. And so, we are working to do that on an operational level as well. And so, I think it was a very productive meeting, but we want to do more of that with the school committee and the Select Board because really, the two leadership groups. And so, we did identify this as a date. I believe one of the topics that would like to be discussed is their strategic plan and their approach to the One Dartmouth, which they've mentioned, and, you know, how we can better assist them and vice versa. But if there's other topics that we'd like to discuss, we just want to give the school committee a heads-up, and they're going to do the same with us if there's other topics. So, in preparation for that meeting, which is our next meeting.
Okay, which is September 25th?
The 9th, 29th.
29th, sorry.
9/29.
It's our next meeting?
Yes.
It'll be in regular session? Does anyone have something that they're thinking they'd like to ask the school committee?
Well, it's not so much, it's an age-old, this is, it's an age-old thing. I think the school committee, or actually, the school department needs to discuss with the athletic director at the rear of this building on nights that there are meetings at Town Hall. I mean, if it wasn't for, if it wasn't for our 5:00 executive session and the employees, you know, leaving Town Hall at 4:30, there'd be no, there would be no spaces back here for anybody to come to a meeting tonight and whatnot. There's generally parking up in the front after 6:00, after an event. But with the advent of, of the parking down below, with a huge amount of parking up in front of the middle school, you know, I don't, what I don't want to do is I don't want to get a police officer over here, being a gatekeeper, saying, are you coming in for a town meeting or are you coming for a game? I really don't want to do that. There's no reason why, you know, somebody from the athletic department can do that just to kind of let everybody know what's going on. You know, it's, it's just been something that's been happening for the last 15, 16 years, and they kind of need to take a, at least kind of help us out. And it's not necessarily, I mean, for somebody who, you know, may not be able to park, they're going to have to park further away, you know, further away to get to, you know, to Town Hall. It's just a matter of convenience, and if somebody can just, you know, I know we talked about it many, many years ago, but nothing ever seems to get done about it. So, it's just, you know, I know it's petty.
Well, we'll see if we can, I certainly can shoot the athletic director an email again.
Yeah, at least some kind of acknowledgement, you know.
And see. But it really, this is timely, Mr. McDonald, only because when we get out, it will be dark. The, the late night sunsets are over. Fall has hit. So, the close a week in park, sadly. Getting out later would be helpful.
And some of us on this board, you know, have reached that elderly threshold.
It's nice of you to, you know, talk.
Is he talking about himself?
I, I think so. I think so. Not you. Not you, Stanley.
No, Stanley, you're beyond elderly.
Anyone else have a burning topic? Mr. Tattelbaum?
Well, on the 17th, before that, we will have had the Long Range Planning School Department presentation. It may be something we can probably add to the agenda to discuss some of the stuff that was done there.
Oh, good idea.
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. O'Neill?
Sure will come up with something.
I'm sure you will. All right. Thank you.
If any of the members think of anything, just shoot me an email. We just want to try to provide the school committee with what exactly we're looking to discuss so they can come prepared.
I'm the one pushing the strategic plan. Both myself and Mr. Tattelbaum worked on that as part of the team last year, and it was a great experience, and the product is wonderful.
Agreed.
All right, next. I was contacted by New Bedford City Councilman Leo Chouquet, who happens to be with us tonight, about a concern in New Bedford which does impact Dartmouth. And I'm going to invite Leo to the podium so that he can tell us a little bit about that. What he's looking for is at some point for our board to join the council to talk about this event in particular, and he's going to be reaching out to other communities that may have a stake in this as well. Mr. Chouquet.
Good evening, Madam Chair. Selectman, Administrator Adad, thank you. First, I just quickly, before I get started, I wanted to say Coach Steven Gasper was a great teacher. We were just, I was just talking to Selectman McDonald about some teachers I had, and he was my gym teacher in the third grade, and I don't know how the patience that man had, had to have been one of the most patient people I ever knew. And he was my health teacher in high school, over here at Dartmouth High, gym coach. Out of all the teachers I had at Dartmouth School System, I think he was with me the longest. I think. I really do. So, it's, it's very, very painful news that we all received, and thank you for, you know, honoring him at the beginning of the meeting. That meant a lot to me. And he was a neighbor also, my parents on High Hill Road. He lived on Pierce Farm Road.
Built up, yeah.
Yeah.
I knew you were a Potter boy.
Yes, I was. Dr. Fletcher, John Fletcher, of all people, was my, my principal at Potter School. So, when I came back from graduate school and law school, and I started getting into politics, I was like, wow, Dr. Fletcher is still on the school in 2011. And Carol there, knew him very well too, and so did Attorney Gorotowski, who's a former Ward One counselor of New Bedford, is with me tonight. counselor of New Bedford, is with me tonight.
I thought you looked familiar.
So anyway, getting to the situation at hand, I didn't mean to cause any alarm with anybody. I just wanted to open dialogue with, you know, the esteemed members of the select board on this issue with Parallel Products slash South Coast Renewables. There's a lot of information to convey, so I'm not going to convey that tonight. I know you guys have a packed agenda. I just wanted to introduce myself and the issue at hand, and then, of course, you know, I can give you guys any information you need. And what we're asking, like the esteemed chairwoman had said, was we would like you to all come, whether before the city council or if we came here, whatever, but I'm hoping that perhaps we can pen a letter to our federal legislators, including Congressman Keating and Senators Warren and Markey, and even the Environmental Protection Agency in Washington. Because the state, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts has ruled via the Mass Department of Environmental Protection that this trash transfer station, which would be located at the former Polaroid plant in the New Bedford Business Park, it would be allowable and a benefit to the community. And, yeah, so I don't know what environment they're protecting, but it's certainly not ours. And like I had said in the past, we form a symbiotic circle, right? What touches New Bedford reaches Dartmouth and vice versa. So my immediate concerns are based on the water. Now, I'm not here to tell you that the owner of Parallel Products is going to cause anything that will result in a breach. But again, nobody got on the Challenger Space Shuttle thinking it was not going to fly again, or the Columbia, right? Even the best-intentioned individuals still, you know, they still encounter mistakes. It's just law of large numbers. Now, speaking of large numbers, we're talking about 1,500 tons of trash a day being imported into this facility. Now, the business model here is fairly straightforward. Currently, the gentleman who owns it is doing glass and bottle recycling, and it's minimal impact right now to the community. You know, it's no problem. However, once this large amount of trash starts being imported, it's akin to like panning for gold, right? They're going to be panning, he's going to be searching for loose bottles and cans out of massive amounts of refuse from Boston, Springfield, Worcester. This isn't even really New Bedford trash. We're importing a massive amount of garbage from the rest of the Commonwealth into the north end of New Bedford. Again, 1,500 tons of trash a day on the order of 368 truck trips per day. I, again, there's a lot to talk about in the informational packets that hopefully I can get to Madam Chair to give you guys the full background on how we got to this point. My biggest worry is that if there is a breach, that the water in the Acushness Cedar Swamp, which is, surrounds the New Bedford Business Park, would be affected. And that would leach into Three Mile Pond, which is the headwaters for the Pascomansa River, which flows right through the center of your downtown, which is still my hometown. And then that eventually would get out to a Ponte Ganser Bay. You know, non-quit, you folks know all the locales. I can't promise this would happen, and I hope it doesn't, but I want everyone here to be made aware that this is a clear and present, you know, potential issue. And that way, the folks in the town of Dartmouth are knowledgeable. And some of the, you know, the community organizations like the DNRT, and again, because Dartmouth is, its environment is its jewel, right? You know, New Bedford has its downtown, its Whaling Center, and the Whaling Museum, and all our, all our great stuff. But you guys have this incredible environment, and I know because I grew up in it on High Hill Road. And I don't want to see something happen. So, and at the very least, I would, this, let's take a positive look at this and say, well, here's an opportunity for the, you know, New Bedford City Council and the Dartmouth Select Board to work together. And so I respectfully request that you would consider reviewing the information we have and making the decision for yourselves. Of course, this is your town, obviously. But make a decision as to whether you believe there's a potential impact. And with that, I mean, I can answer any questions you'd like.
First of all, I want to thank you for approaching me because very often, or in the past, we haven't heard from New Bedford. New Bedford's, you know, and Dartmouth has reached out on other occasions on other topics. So I'm glad that this can start our conversation.
Okay, thank you.
I can see consternation on Mr. McDonald's face.
It's not consternation. First of all, anything to tweak the, tweak the bureaucrats and the idiots at DEP, I'm all for it. So I have no problems doing that. First of, and I'm not surprised at the decision that they made because they make decisions in a vacuum irregardless of what, of what the temperament out there is. Couple things. Number one, I don't have a problem doing what you're asking for. And I would sign on immediately. I would also have our most famous letter writer to DEP, Director Michaud, pen a letter also. I'm sure he would have some very colorful vernacular to add to that. The other thing, too, and this is something that we're partners with the Regional Refuge District. So if they're bringing in 1,500 tons and they're looking to try to find glass and whatnot, what happens to the balance of the, of the waste?
So may I respond to that? And this is just a theory, and I can't, you know, put any data behind it yet. But my father, who just happens to be a director butter to the Crepo Hill landfill, received a letter saying they're looking to open cell number seven, which they went out of their way to extend, again, they didn't tie it at all to the Parallel Products, South Coast Renewable, but they said, this facility will be able to take almost 500 tons of trash a day.
Okay.
So now I'm wondering if this is going to be used to fill up, because I'm sure you folks would, you know, are worried about where you're going to send your trash to once the Crepo Hill landfill.
Well, I mean, and this is, and this is where I was leading to, and this is where I was going with this. You know, here we had a project that started out between three communities. One, and eventually it became just New Bedford and Dartmouth. And it was only supposed to be in finite years. They were able to extend it even further. And now we've extended something that basically was going to be a landfill for 10 years. We're looking at probably 30, 35 years on a landfill, which is unheard of.
Yep, it's been since 1989.
Right. And so as, as we have representatives on the Greater Refuge District, we can basically tell our representatives that we don't want parallel trash at Crepo Hill because we want to keep Crepo Hill for Dartmouth and New Bedford trash only, to keep the extension, to make sure that we have a place to, to put what we need to do. So we can make that directive. And I'm almost positive that New Bedford can do the same thing.
I knew it was a wise move for me to come home. Thank you.
I'm going to suggest that you let us know when the council is going to be putting this on the agenda, unless it's going to be a separate meeting. Inviting us, we will also reach out to Chris Michaud, our Director of Health, and ask him to come with us. And we will also make sure that our, our members from the Greater New Bedford Regional Reef Resource District, the Dartmouth reps, are aware of the same meeting so we can hear the message, and then we can craft something articulate to our friends.
Madam Chair, I've been in close communication with Representative Chris Markey.
Yes, of course.
He's a friend of mine. I know him personally. So, which I had to, I made a little funny joke to him. I said, you know, Chris, I was the guy that grew up in Dartmouth, and now I got to come to you. You grew up in New Bedford, and now you're the Dartmouth, the Dartmouth State Rep. So, yeah, it's funny.
Mr. Tattelbaum?
Selectmen, yes, sir.
Thanks for coming. To me, this is, this is all about facts and detail. And my understanding is that their, their remedies for protecting the environment and people, and not very doc, well documented, it's not a lot of facts about what their intention is to protect the entire area. Is that?
Correct. So we just went through a series of four meetings with the Board of Health in the city of New Bedford. So again, I mean, I'll make sure you, you folks get all the background info, but this essentially was approved by the Mass DEP, and then it was sent to the, you know, the New Bedford Board of Health. And we had an evidentiary hearing over four days. And there were paid spokespeople who came in, experts from Fort Wayne, Indiana, and all these places. They all came in. And again, you know, I mean, I can tell you that I, I can develop a nuclear fusion reactor and save the world, but I can't. You know, and all the technology in the world that can be promised, it just takes one time for something to happen. And not to harp on the whole space shuttle analogy again, but NASA has the best scientists in the world and all the resources, and they still lost two of them. So I hate to say things can happen, but I just want to make sure that this community is well aware of what is happening on the chessboard. Pieces are being moved all over the place. And, you know, as my legislative, you know, colleagues in this city, in this town, I mean, you know, you are all.
But would, would you agree that the, the protection and the list of detail and facts is pretty thin?
Oh, yeah, there's, it's mostly conjecture that what the technology is that could protect things from happening, breaches. And, you know, like, for instance, there's a rail car exposed outside of the facility. That's part of their, their mechanisms for sorting trash. So they tried to say to us that, well, we have this covering that will cover the exposed rail car to keep seagulls out, okay? But it's also a fire hazard. So, you know, just the mechanics of everything, the engineering portions of it, these are things that I want to make sure you all have to look at, and so that you can come to your own decisions.
Is there a model for this kind of facility anywhere in the state of Mass?
No, this would be the largest facility in the state of Mass, believe it or not, by far. And we, look, we already have, and here's the other thing that the Mass DEP, I believe, made a terrible mistake on, there are laws at the state level to prevent, you know, concentration of these facilities. We already have E.L. Harvey Waste Facility on Shawmut Avenue. Couple months back, we had a disaster, and not so much from the fire, which was terrible, but we had a rat infestation. I'm sure you folks saw it on the news. I mean, it was like biblical. You had to see this to believe it. It was like one of Pharaoh's plagues. It was unreal. So if it can happen there, it can happen at a facility that's in proportion far larger, which handles, you know, is supposed to handle 1,500 tons a day. And there is no cap on that. So this facility could potentially increase that if they find that their, you know, their revenue that they're gaining from sorting is not coming, you know, it's not as profitable as they, they want. So in the past, we've had some holes in how we zoned in the city. And we're starting to make some changes in that with the ordinances to try to bring things under control. Again, this is an, an issue that really shouldn't have gotten to this point, and for whatever reason, it's here. So I want to make sure that, you know, our partners across the way, town of Dartmouth, has everything they need.
Just to end my comment, you would think their obligation being, this is such of a large proportion, that they would go out of their way to show how they're going to protect the environment public. And it sounds like they, all they've given us a lot of thin material.
Yeah, they did cut the grass, which was nice on the side of the road because I complained, but.
Thank you.
Mr. Mickelson?
Thanks. Besides the EPA and obviously the developer, is there, how much impact do you have on the positive side? Or do they have?
Well, so the mayor has stated that it would provide 75 jobs for the people in the city of New Bedford. A tipping fee of approximately $800,000 and a tax imprint on our taxes of about 1.3 million. So that really doesn't counteract, counterbalance the potential damage. Because at the end of the day, you're talking about, about 1,500 households within a mile of this place, Pine Hill Acres, Briarwood, Brayley Road, up to Pulaski and beyond. Most folks in, you know, they don't have pensions anymore. Most people have 401Ks, 403Bs, and if they've had to tap into them in the past, they have to rely on their home equity as part of their financial portfolio. And that's what I do for a living. I'm a financial advisor. I did go to UMass Law School, but I, you know, John Quinn is still mad at me because I haven't taken the bar yet, but I found a nice niche in retirement planning. But at the law, at the end of the day, the problem is, the home values are going to drop by 10 to 25% for all these people in that one-mile range. And how can you balance the profit of one business owner against the home equity and health of directly 1,500 homes, and potentially, if something were to breach?
Even larger, sure.
The town of Dartmouth, maybe the town of Free Town. I mean, not even the Pope would get my vote to be, you know, outweigh 1,500 homes, for God's sakes, you know? So I believe that whatever's going on here with this company, that individual has been given far too much latitude, you know, in their business dealings. I'm not going to cry over 75 lost jobs, a million three in tax revenue. I mean, we, we should be trying to get fancy stores up in the Kings Highway now that we have a commuter rail going through there instead of all these dollar stores, you know, something that generates enough revenue that would balance off us getting rid of this 1.3 million of blood money, for lack of a better expression, that we're selling out our own people to, for the sake of one person and the garbage facility.
As my dear old dad says, be careful what you wish for.
Yeah, I don't know what's going on, Selectman Mickelson. It's, it's shocking. I've only been in the council for a little less than two years, and, you know, this, this is something that shouldn't have gotten to where it's gotten.
Seems to be out of hand. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. O'Neill?
Leo, do you know of any relationship thus far with the Refuge District?
I don't know, Selectman O'Neill, if there's any specific relationship between Parallel Products and the Refuge District. I, I wasn't able to uncover anything yet. But I'll leave that in your good graces to see if there's something, because, I mean, you guys seem to have a better connection to the Refuge District than, than I do.
And just on the, the project and its regulatory approval process, where are you? What does the timeframe look like?
Thank you. So it did, it did go through the meetings with the Board of Health, however, and actually, as we speak, assuming the Zoom meeting they had it on is still not, it was hijacked and, you know, hacked tonight. But there was a Zoom meeting rather than an in-person meeting. We had four meetings at Pulaski School. There were about 300-plus folks at Pulaski that came to this, so the whole auditorium was full. The, the actual decision is supposed to either be given tonight or on the 20, I want to say the 22nd.
Or is it the 19th?
Okay.
That's from the New Bedford Board of Health.
Correct.
Is there any other regulatory bodies that need to weigh in, the state, federal?
Well, I believe the Mass DEP already weighed in. And my, my hope by going to the EPA would be, they would be the only body left that could overturn, I think, the Mass DEP and the governor.
And is it, are they supposed to use the rail to get the sorted?
There is a component of the rail that is going to be used, correct. A lot of it is, I'm going to send you the, you know, the specifics. It's a lot to digest. So again, I thank all of you for having the, you know, the, the time to look through all this. But as far as that rail goes, there is, there are a couple of, I want to say, turnoffs.
Spurs.
Yeah. Yeah. And of course, Crepo Hill had, the rail does go by Crepo Hill, to my knowledge. How they plan on getting in there, I don't, I don't know, but there's going to be some way to do it.
Thank you.
Yep. And that'll, that'll definitely be in the data to give to you folks.
Cody is going to reach out to you to make sure you have his information so you can get whatever data that you have, whatever reports you have. And he'll be able to get it out to all of us. And he'll be able to get it out to all of us. And I look forward to hearing a date of when we can all get together, because this is something clearly, if hearing the dates that you're talking about with the Board of Health...
Yeah, it's impending.
We need to move soon.
So, my thought process would be, if, and again, I'm still holding out hope that two out of the three Board of Health members will vote this down. But if they don't, then I would think we would have to appeal it right away, lest construction begin.
So, once that vote is taken, if it's affirmative, then that's it?
Well, we can still, we can still appeal it in the court.
Yeah, but there's no other body that you're going to go forward to after that vote?
No, it's the courts, yep. And I'm hoping that, you know, the EPA could come down here. And now, the Army Corps of Engineers actually did a hydrological survey study when Crepo Hill was put in. And there is a lot of, you know, open marshland back there, as you know. So, perhaps we could get the Army Corps of Engineers to come back over there and redo that. I mean, I'm just trying to think outside the box, but anything at the federal level, and of course, we would have to phrase it in the form of a federal legal question in order to get it at the federal level, you know, violation of federal EPA guidelines or potential violation. So, that's my thought process. And again, I'll get you folks the data and anything that you can come up with.
Buzzards Bay Coalition.
I'm sorry, sir?
Buzzards Bay Coalition, get them involved.
Okay, that's great. We need all hands on deck. And again, I'm sorry I came here to ask for help cleaning up the city's mess, but, you know, it will affect the town potentially.
Maybe our mess. So, thank you for giving us a heads up. And Cody will share that information with us, with our Board of Health, with Chris Michaud, DNRT, Buzzards Bay Coalition, and our reps from greater New Bedford Refuge District. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Selectman, Mr. Hadad, thank you.
The only other item you may want to consider is, you know, this is an opportunity, if there were to be a meeting with the City Council, if there's any other items that we want to try to bring forward. You know, I think it's not often that we get that opportunity.
I wanted to mention that because we, the, one of the benefits already to the Buttonwood Book Project came as a result of our relationship with Buzzards Bay Coalition. And a lot of that work that's being done came from grants as a result of that relationship. We're also working with the DPW with Buzzards Bay and Mark Rasmussen, we're getting the combined sewer overflow, which is a gigantic issue for the city of New Bedford. And we're in the process of trying to have them come make a presentation here, because the city is spending millions of dollars every year to try to fix it, but we have a long way to go. But I think there's a lot of more collaboration we can do with the city and...
Any chance you'd be interested in taking any of our tax work?
Not a given, Chuck.
We need a water break, that's what we need, on the amount of...
Yeah, so we, yeah, we'll put the CSO and our water purchasing.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks again.
Thank you. Next time I show up, it'll be better news.
Well, we hope so.
All right. Next, we have a follow-up information on the request to construct signage in right-of-way at 461 and 491 Fons Corner Road. Mr. Hadad?
Yeah, so the board at their last meeting had conditionally approved the sign in the right-of-way on Fons Corner Road contingent upon, oh, two of those items were contingent upon a council review and a recommendation from the DPW director. In your packet tonight is a synopsis from Town Council, Anthony Savistano, and also a letter from DPW Director Tim Barber. So, in essence, Tim Barber does detail some of his concerns regarding this, and Attorney Savistano also shares some of his concerns.
Yeah, any way you look at it.
So, at the last meeting, we looked at this and did a preliminary vote. Let me go back. I guess that was a few meetings ago. Hang on.
I believe it was the last meeting.
Oh, it was the last meeting.
Yeah, a few of my other meetings in my book. Yes, the signage. And we did it as conditional.
And the Town Council.
I believe we asked to have the Town Council involved and give us his opinion, which he has.
Yeah, we asked the attorney to weigh in, and we also asked Tim Barber to weigh in.
Right, right.
So, yeah, given the feedback that you have in your packet, I thought it was worthy to bring back to your attention to decide how you wanted to move forward. You know, had this come back with, you know, clean recommendations from both DPW and council, I think that would have met your conditional approval. But since there are several items in here that are of concern for both parties, I felt it should come back to the board to decide how you would like to move forward.
Well, I mean, I would not, I would not vote unless the conditions requested by the DPW and by Attorney Savistano were put in writing. So, whatever form that may be, I would probably suggest that we see that form so that we can look at it. I mean, it's good to have the opinions of both of them, but, you know, I think it needs to be in a single...
Like a revocable license agreement?
Yes.
Okay.
And that would be the only thing that I would want to see as far as, you know, voting anything on to see that those are on and whether or not, you know, the other party's agreeable to it. Because if they're not agreeable to it, then there's nothing to, there's nothing to discuss.
So, my interpretation of reading Attorney Savistano's letter, to me, read that this was not something he felt could, would be allowable. Mr. Talabom?
Well, I guess my question is, there's an awful lot of restriction and rules to get this done. And are they realistic that if we're all put in writing and agreed upon, is it something that actually can be done? It seems like it's almost trying to put a square peg in a round hole, but can it be done? And will they sign it if that's the case? That's my question. Cody, you got an opinion on that?
This is really a policy decision, you know, for the board to consider. And we've, you know, pulled together the information that, you know, has been requested from the board, I think. And at the end of the day, it ends up being a policy decision.
Greg? I think we should postpone any decision at this point. And until we, we may be, we can ask Anthony to reach out to them and see if they're willing to sign these, this guarantee policy. Other than that, I don't think I could be in favor of it. Heidi?
Oh, sorry, Chris O'Neil.
Yeah, so, did we get a response from the proponent?
I did, yes. Mr. Steen did respond to me. Just, I just got a lot of this late last week, so I was just getting it over. Give me one moment.
So, Cody's looking for that. In my, again, in my opinion, both of the letters that came back, both Tim and Anthony, both state that if the select board decides to go ahead and offer a revocable license agreement to the proponent, then we would have to, you know, get conditions in there as far as installation, access, emergency conditions. The only reference from Tim, over a year ago now, he had the opportunity to say, you know, no, my opinion is, we don't want it in the right-of-way. He didn't say that. He said he needed 10 feet. So, and you know what? Bar this application, bar this situation. You know, we need to make concise decisions because it costs time and money when we go back and forth on whether you agree with something or you don't. And that, you know, in my opinion, is tragic in a situation like this way here. You're spending a lot of money and a lot of time. We've got a lot of tenants out there looking for signage in this, really, just this area, it's unprecedented. And that's the only reason that I brought it forward to you guys, because not one other place that you're going to find on Fons Corner Road, in the largest commercial district that we really have, do you find a right-of-way tail off like it does between these two or three properties. So, it's really unfortunate. It's really a hardship for the tenants inside this park, because they can't get their signage closer to the road like all the others do on Fons Corner Road. So, basically, what it comes down to is that, Tim said 10 feet. If we can keep it away from the water line for 10 feet, and if in an emergency we need to remove it, then we put that in the license and it's removable. We don't need an easement. It's done by license, similar to the other utilities. And I just don't see why it's such a big headache. If we have an emergency out there, you know, the Commonwealth comes down, they change the right-of-way, then it's in the license agreement. If we get a board that decides that, you know what, let's take a look at the license agreements, we don't agree with it, then we don't renew it. Simple.
So, the easement issue does come up in Anthony's letter. He does talk about the easement.
Yeah.
Having been up and down Fons Corner Road, as I've said before, Fallon has figured out a way to put up a sign. And I don't know whether they have made a deal with the solar cannabis on their land, but they have a sign up. Edward Jones is right on the street, which is the other sign. I voted against this at our last meeting because I felt that it may set a precedence for other businesses who build sort of off the main road. Unfortunately, why this was not brought up when they first built, and maybe you'll correct me and say that it was, but when they purchased the land, they had no right to have a sign out front, and they still chose to purchase and develop the land.
Well, you can, they'll have the signs out there. I mean, they have the signs out there now, you know, but you're going to have, you're going to have five or six signs, you know, all over the place out there. You know, the way that it was presented by their engineer, I thought, you know, in my opinion, cleaned it right up. I mean, it looked pretty nice. You know, you go directly across the street and those concrete signs are five feet off the walkway. So, it's just, the reason that I brought it back was that, you know, we had kind of a wish wash from the DPW. So, now, even in his current opinion, if the select board approves this, then, okay. And then Anthony says the same thing. So, I mean, it's a license agreement. It's not an easement. It's revocable. They would agree to move it if need be. And it's further away than some to the right-of-way, I would assume, but, I don't know, I don't understand why it's such a big deal, but...
As I said, I would want to see it in writing.
Sean, you're not going to get it in writing any more than we've gotten in writing. We had his...
The licensing agreement.
Oh, yeah, well, that's what I'm asking for. You know, Anthony, you know, the Town Council, it's kind of flipped here, you know, is, why don't we just abdicate and just let him do whatever he wants to do? You know, what I wanted to do is ask him to draw up a license agreement that we could look at and approve. And Tim's only objection was that we want to make sure it's at least 10 feet away, which they went back and drew up plans because that's what he said. So, it's time, it's money. All I hear is that Dartmouth's not business friendly. Okay, whatever, you know? Is it a hardship? I think it's a hardship. I think it's unprecedented, just because of the layout of the right-of-way out there. I think they screwed up when they did the right-of-way, to be honest with you. They should have brought the water line straight up. I don't know why it jogs that way, but it is what it is. If we don't want to go for the license, then...
I think that if they're willing to sign a license agreement, protects us, and we also include that, the DPW restriction, I think it is precedent-setting, but if it comes up again in the same road, that other people will have the same, sign the same license agreement, which means that it may have to go at some point for whatever the reason. I sympathize with the retailers that are in the back there facing backwards to get some visibility on the road. And if the landlord's willing to sign an irrevocable thing that can be, you know, we can take charge of that space and then offer that to them if they want to do it, then fine. And as long as that Town Council agrees, that protects us.
That's always been the contention by the proponent, that they would sign a license agreement with the emergency removal. They're not worried about any of that. They'll take it out of there. And then, again, it's, you know, it's completely up to the select board, whether it's kept in place or revoked.
And that would also include, irrevocable agreement would include the building department's approval, etc., whatever the process includes to...
Yeah, as far as the placement goes, the size, all of that still applies.
Right.
You know, there can't be a sign in a direct line of sight. It has to be, it has to be brought back to a point where...
Which is a building department approval, yeah. If they're willing to sign a agreement that says if for some reason it has to go, then why wouldn't we do it to give them that? And if it comes up again down the road, it would be a real special case, then they'll have to face the same issue again.
And I agree with Anthony, you know, the certificates of insurance would have to be, would be noted.
Yep.
So, you've got the install, the maintenance, access, emergency conditions, etc. Now, it would be defined in the agreement.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Mc...
Make a motion that we authorize Mr. Hadad to discuss a licensing agreement with, and have it drawn up by Town Council for our review, for the signage as requested.
Second.
Second, thank you. We have a motion on the floor. Does anyone have any questions regarding this? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great. And anyone opposed?
Aye.
Mr. Mickelson is opposed, one opposed. I am voting in favor of this because the conditions will be stated. Thank you. All right, next, we have in our packet the tree bylaw. And this is the, what we're looking at that would eventually be placed on the warrant.
Yes, so, this has been work in progress from the Tree Committee for quite some time. We were able to, I believe this was something that they tried to get on the spring town meeting warrant, but it didn't, you know, due to reviews and timelines, it didn't make it on that warrant. I've been working with legal to have them review it. What you have in your packet is the bylaw as proposed by the Tree Committee with council's comments. What you'll notice is there's several comments of, you know, substantial merit in some cases. So, what we have done, I met with the Tree Committee this afternoon, we have presented them with a simpler bylaw that council has worked to draft. We are going to help them fill in some holes, and we think we will be able to present a revised version of this that will be amenable and compliant with the law and all regulations, and hopefully make it onto the warrant. So, to be determined on that. We've been working with them on this, a lot of work on this. But I just wanted to include this to show that the Tree Committee has put in a lot of effort and a lot of work. of effort and a lot of work, and we're working with them on our end to come up with a, a solution that we feel is something that is legal and also can be brought forward at town meeting to accomplish what they're looking to accomplish as a subcommittee of the select board.
Well, I thank you for working diligently on this because certainly the tree committee, which is one of our newest committees, is passionate about this project. And that passion comes through. This would be probably one of our longest and most comprehensive bylaws. So, I, I thank legal, looking at how we can protect the trees, protect our town, and do it in something that people reading it will understand.
Yes, exactly.
So, thank you. I look forward to seeing the next version at, I believe, our next meeting.
Yes, that will be the deadline. So, our, that is our goal.
For?
That is the goal, to get it on fall. However, we want to make sure we're putting together a high-quality product and presenting it to the town. So, we are diligently working. That is the goal, and if it cannot happen, we will certainly make sure it happens in the spring. But the goal is for the fall.
Very good.
Thank you. Next, we have the Fall River, uh, Fall River, Fall, geez, Fall Town Meeting Warrant Review. And this, again, is sort of placeholders.
Yes, we're, I mean, we're, this is a, a pretty good, you know, solid draft. There's still some, some details that need to be filled in, but you can see we're looking, you know, somewhere in the range of 15 articles for the Fall Town Meeting. A number of these are housekeeping articles that we like to call. You do have, I went over some of them at the last meeting. The Community Preservation Committee does have a, a proposed project for the Aiken House. We are, as long as capital, so Capital Planning Committee will be voting, I'm sorry, meeting beginning on Wednesday. If they do approve the feasibility study for the high school roof, MSBA requires that be a separate article with very specific language, so you can, you'll see that is on the, on the proposed warrant here as well. We have the tree bylaw. One of the items I believe the board will want to discuss tonight, and again, on the 29th, is the proposed charter changes based on the feedback that you had provided at your last meeting. I went ahead and drafted several charter amendments to address some of your concerns. Those included the membership of Board of Assessors, Board of Health, and Board of Public Works, from three members to five. The zoning board of appeals is actually not established by charter, but rather by general bylaw. So, you'll notice that that is a proposed article in the warrant as well. Selectman O'Neill has mentioned, you know, some of his concerns regarding rules and regulations on implementation on that 10-day buffer. So, we did draft some language on that as well, that, you know, we can get the board's feedback on. Our personnel bylaw, we, we did basically a mid-year hire of the substance use coordinator position. So, now we need to go back and add that to Schedule E at our next town meeting, so that's the change there. Appropriation from CDBG program income. This is, the town used to be part of the Community Development Block Grant, it was a federal program, and we're no longer a part of that. 2010, I believe, is the last year that we were part of that. As we closed out that program, we replaced it with the Housing Rehab Program funded with Community Preservation Act funds. But we sometimes will get these funds in as repayment. And so, we have about $170,000 in there. And what we've done over the last five or so years is an appropriation from that account to community development funds, which Mr. Vitale actually mentioned when he gave the grants update. We've been utilizing that account as grant matches, if we need consultants to do, you know, small studies, anything related to community development activities. So, another appropriation to that account. The Board of Assessors did vote to increase elderly tax exemption from $500 to $1,000. So, that will be also appear on the warrant. And I believe I actually missed the, the Council on Aging, which I previously mentioned, was looking to just provide some updates to their bylaw. Really nothing too significant, and more just cleaning up the bylaw, it hasn't been updated in several years.
But I can see that it's an advisory board.
Yes, exactly.
It's not what it was called. And we, we want these things to be clear, so I appreciate that. I have to say, Cody, I appreciate your work on, this is a robust Fall Town Meeting. I mean, I think you've covered a lot.
It's a team effort. I can't, certainly can't take all the credit. Chris was instrumental in his assistance, and Gary also, obviously with a lot of the financial articles. So, we have a very good leadership team here that has allowed us to put this together.
I also want to just have the select board members note that from page 41 on, we have some input from the various boards on their structures.
Yes, you had requested that.
Yeah.
You had requested we reach out.
So, I just want to make sure that you read through on that because that may impact our decision with those warrant items. What we were trying to do is make sure that our, our boards and committees were well-staffed, so to speak, so that they had robust discussions at their meetings and, and had a quorum of discussion. And the concern of having three members was having a quorum of two, and that being difficult to have, you know, conversations that were not looked at as potentially violations of the open-mating law. So, I do want to call your attention to those so that when we vote in two weeks' time, that we can talk specifically about those different boards. As those of us who were in attendance at the zoning board of appeals, the zoning board actually has three sitting members and members as alternates. And, you know, certainly that is something to consider, alternates. And the concern is when we have alternate members, their attendance, they have signed on to go to every meeting, so if called upon to vote, they have all the background. They just don't show up when needed. They're, they're there. So, it's certainly a structure that's worthy of, of review as well.
A question?
Yes, Mr. McDonald.
I don't know. Based on the, the letters we received from the Board of Health, and I had a conversation I had with Chris Micho, it seems that making a change doesn't have a lot of support. And at some point in time, I, it was proper tonight or next meeting, that I think we ought to, I'd like to consider a vote to eliminate that from the warrant because I think it's, at this point in time, there's a lot more important things to do and consider it. With that kind of lack of support from them, I think it would be, be totally unnecessary to address that particular issue of the Board of Health.
Mm-hmm. Anyone else on the town meeting warrant? All right. At our next meeting, we'll be looking at all of those warrant articles.
So, next meeting, you will have to go through and provide your recommendations. If there's anything that I have not captured, please let me know because, so we can get it drafted and included on that meeting. We're going to also, you know, get this out to the Finance Committee soon because they need to start reviewing these and providing their feedback. So, if there's any initial feedback on, on items that you want to see changed, removed, definitely let me know sooner rather than later so we can adequately attend to those.
Great work, Cody.
Thank you.
All right, next, Cody, Town Administrator's Update.
Yes, we have been very busy. Excited to share that, you know, we, we really have put an emphasis on employee appreciation. And I have met several times with a dedicated group of employees who make up our Employee Appreciation Committee. We are hosting a, an event later this week, a little end-of-summer ice cream social. So, very appreciative to Parks and Rec and Becky Amorall for her support there, and looking forward to that event. I also want to wish Dolores Joseph and Melanie Perry well as they begin a graduate certificate program through the Mass Municipal Association in Suffolk University. It's a 25-week-long course on Fridays. That is, yeah, it's, it's very high-level and really is looking to prepare kind of the next, next set of leadership, leaders for municipal government. So, it's a great program. Our Community Services Long Range Capital Planning Workshop Meeting is tomorrow at 6:00 PM at the COA. Our CI PC, as I mentioned, begins this Wednesday to review capital requests for town meeting. Departments have submitted all of those. On that, I want to mention that we received notification this afternoon that our free cash was certified at eight point, almost $8.2 million. That is historic. We've never had free cash that high in Dartmouth's history, and I really want to give kudos to Gary Crowell, our Finance Director. I think that starts with him.
Thank you, Gary.
Just a correction.
It's 2.8.
There's elk, oh, I apologize.
It's on Thursday?
Yeah. I was too excited.
Not that, not that kind of correction.
No, so that, that is, you know, prior to, last year, we were in the sevens, but prior to that, we, you know, we were at around 5 million, give or take. So, you know, this is.
Nice jump.
Really, I think, financial oversight of the town, also strong financial policies that we have in place. And I think, you know, one of the interesting things, not to get too much into the weeds, is, you know, our budget, more than 50% goes to the schools, right? If you look at where the turnbacks are, it's, it's, so most of this comes from, you know, surplus revenue and the turnbacks of only about 50% of the budget, because the schools typically don't turn back a lot of money. So, it's, it's, it really, it just shows the, the hard work and dedication by our team. So, again, congratulations to Gary. And then, one of the other exciting topics, we've talked about before, but we met this morning, myself, Gary, and Tim Barber met in Westport with Westport's leadership team to discuss the interconnection of water from Fall River. It was a very productive meeting. We have, they're going to share some design plans with us. We're going to work on getting some numbers together ourselves, and also look to schedule a meeting with Fall River. But Westport is fully on board and supportive of this initiative, so I'm very confident that we'll be able to make progress on this.
Another, yay. Thank you.
And that is all for now.
Well, that's, that's, that's good. All right. Nothing new on our proposed town projects?
No, that'll be the next meeting. We'll do that once a month.
Okay. Old Business 40B update?
Just that the first public hearing was held here on 8/27. The ZBA opened both public hearings for the project proposed on Old Westport Road and the former Hawthorne Country Club on Tucker Road. Both of those were continued to September 25th at the middle school. And again, just a shout-out to the staff that, Michelle Vera from the zoning board of appeals, and Ross Cuddy in our planning department, did excellent job. You know, we had a lot of people here, well over 100 people, and they did a nice job of making sure that worked, and people were able to, you know, see, and DCTV did an excellent job as well. So, I, I'm very thankful for them. But that next meeting will be at the middle school auditorium on the 25th. With that being said, you know, we have a timeline with these ZBA meetings for a comprehensive permit, and unfortunately, the only night that they were available until the end of October was September 25th. We did have a public workshop scheduled for the long-range capital for the same night for DPW projects, which, you know, arguably are some of the most impactful coming up in the near future. We have collectively as a team made a decision to postpone that meeting. The new date is going to be September 30th, and we also have a change of venue to the Southworth Library. So, we just finalized that a couple hours ago, and so we will be sharing that information, you know, with the newspaper and online and all avenues. But, you know, we, we didn't want residents to have to choose two very important meetings in town. And so, with the ZBA meeting being on the 25th, we decided to push the public works, workshop meeting for long-range capital to September 30th at 6:00 PM at the Southworth Library.
Thank you for doing that because those are two big meetings that a lot of people will want to attend. So, thank you. Anything else on any of the other?
Bliss Corner, our team just continues to work internally. We do have a meeting with EPA coming up later this month, but we have no, no new updates at this point.
Okay. All right, the minutes. Did everyone have a chance to look at them?
I didn't see anything.
August 11th and August 18th. I looked at them and thought they looked.
Make a motion to approve both.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Mr. McDonald and seconded by Mr. Mickelson to approve both August 11th and August 18th. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I just wanted to ask, on the minutes from August 18th, there was discussion about, let me, I'm just going to get to it, the farm police station and, I'm trying to think exactly where it is. I apologize for that. I didn't know if we knew there was the possibility of getting a state agency.
Oh, yes, so the.
The Mass Works grant for the police station?
Yeah, the grant decisions have not come out yet.
Okay.
We anticipate them either late this month or sometime in October. So, we will, we have a couple of grant applications in through the Mass Works program. So, once we have a decision, either way, we will let the board know.
Okay, thank you. All right, select board updates. Mr. O'Neill?
Yeah, I got a couple of things. So, the, let me just switch out of the screen.
Yes, yep.
So, the, the tour, the farm tour tomorrow, I'm going to be going on that at Copacabana. And I don't know if anybody else is.
I may be going.
Head out there?
Maybe, yeah.
Okay.
I gotta work.
Just a request for an update, Heidi, on that stop sign request that we got from the neighbors over at Franklin and Chestnut. We received the note from Steve Canario. Safety officer comments, "Stop sign may be used for obstructive view. The residence on the corner does have a fence that obstructs some of the view from Franklin. I would not be opposed to making a four-way stop due to the obstruction." So, I don't know if we can get that on the agenda at some point to, to get that approved. That, that request came from, directly from a butter and the neighbors in that area.
Do you have anything on that? Can somebody?
Yep, we have. Chris was approached by the Butters about the concern and sent the information to Steve Canario to investigate.
Okay.
Steve did and got back to Chris and I and said that he would put that up if it needs to come before us.
Was that location again?
Franklin and Chestnut Street in South Dartmouth.
I don't even know.
Anything else, Mr. O'Neill? No?
Good, thank you.
Mr. McDonald?
Yeah, just to, just as a, just something that just came very quickly to mind with this. If somebody, if somebody from the board has sent something out to any of the department heads or anything like that, on request of the neighbors, can we just CC the town administrator or our office on that so they, they just know what's coming up? I, I, that's only just a, just as a quick thing here so that our office isn't blindsided or, you know, they're, they're made aware of it. The other thing too is that, one of the things, I was watching the, the ZBA on the 40B during the course, and one of the things that kind of stuck out was the tenor of one of the, one of the presenters. And it kind of struck a nerve to a lot of people because I have, sometimes comments made in meetings and whatnot just get glossed over and whatnot, but this one kind of really struck a nerve with a lot of people. And that was basically when one of the gentlemen got up and basically said, regarding the Butters, and they, basically, in essence, he said, "Well, many of you don't have to worry about whether or not the project is going to get finished because you may move." And that really kind of pissed off a lot of people.
Yes.
From that comment. And I, I don't know how to characterize that comment, but the only way I can characterize it is just pure arrogance and a total disregard to, to the feelings of, of the people. And, and I would suggest to future presenters to basically be very careful how you pronounce something because you just. because you just...
This is a situation, we need them to work with us.
You need to read the room, you know, you're making a presentation where it's going to impact a lot of people, and basically, you're poking a, you know, you're poking a stick at the bear, and it just doesn't work.
Thank you, I was in attendance and felt the same. Mr. Talabon?
A few quick things, thanks again, Cody, for mentioning the dates for the long-range planning. September 9th tomorrow, Community Projects at the COA, September 17th, Dartmouth Schools at the middle school, 6 to 8, and the change to, which will announce formally September 30th, the DPW project, 6 to 8 at the Southworth Lobby. Thank you for making all that happen, Cody. Couple other small, I'd just like to make a shout-out, I take the train from New Bedford to Boston pretty regularly, and they didn't start off very well, and they didn't even have staff for the weekends, but fair is fair, it runs very, very well. It's clean, it's well, the conductor's doing their job, there's always going to be a problem, because a lot of the stuff they don't have control over, and sometimes there are issues, but credit them for what they're trying to do, I find more and more people on the trains, and it's, it's a great ride, it's a 90-minute ride from Church Street to South Station. I try to do that in Boston, driving in at any time, and I, it's a great way to travel, and I just, they deserve kudos, and obviously, when they make a, they screw it up, they deserve that as well, so...
Right, everyone talks about that, but no one talks, things are going well, so I thank you for, for pointing that out.
The other, the other thing I'd like to say, I'd like to just mention something about Steve Gasper.
Mm-hmm.
Years and years ago, he and his wife were basically single-handedly responsible for getting started the after-palm party, which got kids off the street, off cars, and into the school, and I dare say, there has not been an issue since that time. They put their heart and soul into that for 20-plus years, it still goes on, in fact, we're now paying people to do that, and they did it from the goodness of their hearts, the volunteer. This is the kind of fellow he was, it's a sudden loss, the man is a magnificent human being, and to credit him for the years and years he put in to the schools for these kids, and he's, it's a massive loss, and he's a great, great fellow. Thank you, Steve, and rest in peace. Thank you, Ms. Brooks.
Thank you. Stan?
I'm good.
Good? All right, I am going to announce a much-anticipated ribbon-cutting and open house of Chick-fil-A. This Wednesday, September 10th, from 9:00 AM till 10:30, join us to celebrate Dartmouth's newest Chick-fil-A. You'll have the opportunity to hear from your local owner-operator, Julie Gallagher, who, this is the woman who came to our meeting and spoke, learn more about the Chick-fil-A, and try some of our signature menu items ahead of our opening. If you take note on social media, if you dress like a cow, there is no charge.
They open on Friday?
That's Friday, this is just the ribbon-cutting, so save your costume for Friday, Wednesday is the ribbon-cutting. So, other than that, as Mr. McDonald alluded to, team sports have started, so those of you looking for something to do, you can certainly attend high school sports in person, you can also catch their sports on DCTV. DCTV has gotten a couple of shout-outs tonight, but I do want to give them another shout-out. Friday night, they were showing the Dartmouth High School football game live, and they showcased, they talked about Steve Gasper's experience and his, his legacy that he leaves behind. They showed his, a montage of when he was inducted into the Hall of Fame, and when the Dartmouth High School gym was, gym was named, not the gym, but the basketball court was named for him. They also did a highlight reel showing on Sunday, and it will be shown again this Thursday, starting at 8:00 AM, of Steve Gasper's games as a coach, and it would be wonderful if we could get those, I guess it would be done in the late 60s, as a player, it would be nice to see, yeah, dust some of those things off.
If there were three pointers in those days, he would have been a 40-point.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely, so it is a great loss to our town, and we do mourn that loss, I thank you. On that note?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion made by Mr. McDonald, seconded by Mr. Mickelson. All in favor?
Aye.
All right.